Coram, that's for sure. So I will call a meeting to order, gavel or no. And the first order of our evening is for a discussion and approval of the draft of the minutes of the ZBA way back in the year. And Brian supplied us with a copy of the draft and I found as a retired English professor, I found a few little things that I will point out to him, but I'd like to hear what other members of the board feel about this as an accurate account of what took place in February. Anything you want to add or subtract or discuss?
I'm looking them up. You know, I just have to say sort of off the record, but getting, getting minutes five months after the, it's not, it's nothing. It's just because we always wait till the next meeting. Is there a way to make that expedite that a little bit? It really is difficult.
I, I will take responsibility of that. I was, I, they were half done and then COVID hit. And I was in and out of the office and it just, it just didn't get done until basically things got back into motion right around Memorial Day. And I was able to get them complete in recently leading up to this meeting. So I'll take the, I'll take the responsibility for their lateness on that.
I mean, worldwide pandemic, Ryan.
Right. But I'm sorry, I don't even see the minutes. I see the minutes. Are you talking about the 27 Platte Avenue?
It would have been 11 Platte Avenue.
Why do I have minutes from 27 Platte Avenue?
I don't know.
I have, I don't have the right minutes.
Oh geez. I don't know how that happened.
I have minutes from a matter that came before us on February 20th, 2014.
That was, that was to inform our current conversation.
Oh, right. That, that was part of the submission package for, for, for tonight. So I sent the minutes out, I believe, two weeks ago.
Okay, I'm looking.
Rachel?
The minutes we're talking about are the minutes of February 20th, 2020.
Okay. And what, tell me what the address was? What was the matter?
It was 11 Platte Avenue. It was for a proposed three car garage. They were going to demolish the existing
Oh, right.
And it was the architect and the owner.
This is the one where we accepted two conditions in our decision from the planning board.
Yes, I recall.
And I have read it over. And as I say, there are a couple of little things that I got my yellow paper at the pencil out for, but it seems to me an adequate and complete and logical account of what we did that evening. I would appreciate any views from anybody else who was there.
Christopher?
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, reasonable summary. I'm happy with it. I noticed one or two spelling errors. Service where it should be surface. And the fourth line before the end of the general account. Just before the motion.
Okay.
So would one of you move to accept these this minutes? And we could have a second and we could have a vote.
I move to accept.
Do I have a second?
I'll accept, I'll second it. I'm looking at them. Yes.
So it's been moved and seconded that the minutes for February 2nd, sorry, February 20th, 2020 be accepted. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We've done something unanimous. Isn't it wonderful?
I'll abstain. Just Colton, just to make sure we know I'm abstaining because I was not at the meeting.
Right.
Let the record show that Lydia abstained.
Yes, I have four ayes and one, one abstention.
Okay, thank you. Now, we usually hear now from the appellant and any representatives he wants to bring with him. And that would be the next thing we would, we would want to do.
Okay, may I raise this an issue before we do that?
Sure.
I would like to ask and suggest that as we start these meetings, we read out for the benefit of reminding ourselves and informing opponents who may not be so familiar with how we act, the variances that apply and the guidances, guidance, the guidelines that we're asked to follow for particular types of variance. So today's, today's case, for instance, is an area variance and there's a short list of the guidelines we're meant to follow.
That's an excellent idea.
I'm not quite understanding what it is that
Just to focus us on what it is that we're exactly being asked to rule on and what are the
The guidelines.
zoning board requirement guidelines for ruling on the variance requested.
Well, the report of the zoning board was not its usual full recommendations. They found no, they had no findings. But they did with a message, a motion of John Clark and the response of Mary Quinn, make a positive recommendation to the zoning board for an area variant application made by Mr. Weinstein for a side yard setback. As I see it, their numericals are a little different than what is being requested. But this is their recommendation without a specific finding that the the board made a positive recommendation means it's in its our hands without any particular issues or points that the planning board wants us to consider.
Well, it is a five yard side, side yard, five foot side yard setback that's being requested.
That's correct.
Area variance of five feet. So that's one thing to and, and perhaps Ryan might read us from the zoning board law, the requirements for an area variance.
12051B.
Or Chris can.
I can read if we feel like I've got it.
Right ahead, Chris.
Okay, area variances. In its consideration of area variances, the Board of Appeals shall take into account the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted, as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. In making such determination, the Board of Appeals shall also consider, A, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. B, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. C, whether the requested area variance is substantial. D, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. And E, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. And one further thing, it says that in granting an area variance, we're meant to grant the minimum variance that should that we shall deem necessary and adequate, and at the same time preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety and welfare of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are also allowed to impose conditions. Not long as they're consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter. And shall be imposed for the purpose of minimizing any adverse impact such variance may have on the village.
Mr. Faris said two years, spent two years on the revision of that document and I never have gotten a copy of it. I have, I have my little green book that I'm still consulting, but I believe
I hope it's all the same. This is from the card.
It's very, it's very close to what we did back in those days. So we have heard not only the, the planning board's recommendation or its response, but also been reminded of our responsibilities, which we will be examining at the very end of the meeting also. But now I think it would be important for us to hear from Mr. Weinstein and hear any, answer any questions we might have from what his original submission had told us about it.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, so we decided that we wanted to install a hot tub and we wanted to choose a place on our property would give, that would give us the utmost privacy. And in doing so, we decided on what east corner of the property, if you look on the map. So in that area, we have a fence, a six foot fence, just opposite where we want to put the hot tub. We also have a six foot gate for privacy so that no one from Livingston Street, for example, could even see our hot tub. So those are the two main criteria. And as far as people seeing it from Chestnut Street, that would be impossible. There's no way they could see our hot tub from Chestnut Street as well.
If you want, if it is helpful, we can take the iPad out and we can show you the area so that you can see it. You know, because I know some of you were able to come by and visit, but not all of you did. So it might give you a good idea as to what the area is like.
Yes, I visited the site a few days ago and as I recall, the area is also paved, is it not?
Not at the moment, not, not where we want the hot tub to go because we do need to put a foundation underneath it. They need a pad to support it.
But down, but down along the side too, at the, between the
There is a path, yes.
There is a flagstone, there's a flagstone path leading to the back. When you came by, I think we walked on the church side to give you a perspective of where the hot tub would be. If you recall.
I do, yep.
But certainly we could do a walkthrough for the members, which would really capture exactly where the tub was going to be and the area around it. Would you like us to do that?
You're saying it will be totally invisible from the street, from Livingston and from Chestnut as well? And what about from the church?
Completely invisible. It is the only spot in our property that would be completely private. And we can actually show you.
The fence along this, the, the side of this is, as Mr. Weinstein said, a very, very tall fence. And it's a quick, it seemed like a quite private spot. But are there other things that would you, would you like, since it's not pitch blackout yet and
Yeah, we could go out right now. This will take
I'm happy with the information provided, but it's fine.
It's okay. Let's take
I walked around the site.
Okay, we'll just take a quick stroll. So it will take less than two minutes. So as we walk outside, we're on Livingston Street right now. You're familiar with?
I'm trying to see if I'm
And now I'm walking on the path going towards the back.
Yeah, I could turn and see the, the church.
Church is on your right.
Look if you can see the church here.
Yeah.
That is the church.
And I just opened up the big gate.
So this would be the corner underneath the window. And this is looking north towards Chestnut.
And my wife is responsible for the beautiful garden work.
And this is looking towards a church.
How tall is that fence?
Six feet.
Six feet.
Want to close the gate so they can see how it looks with the gate?
Six feet. I'm just about 510.
So this would be it.
Does that help?
Yes. Will, will the slab be at grade? Will this slab be at grade?
This slab might be a couple of inches above grade because of the, the proper foundation that is needed to take the weight of the hot tub.
A part of the slab could be below grade, right?
That's right.
Yes.
Yes.
To be above water so it doesn't get damaged. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
We'll come back in.
I don't think we'll ever make another decision without being led through what we're supposed to be looking at. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, it does help.
I meant to think the COVID will go on forever.
Thank you. I think, I didn't even stop screen share. I think we see, we see it probably, yes.
Now, our next let's get everybody seated again. Our next obligation is to open the meeting to the public. And for that, I need a motion from the board.
I'll move to open it to the public.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye please, or anybody opposed? That's a good board there.
I give, I can give you a thumbs up.
Now, the public doesn't seem to have shown up on my screen. I know that there is one person who lives across behind the, the property here, who I don't know whether everybody's had a chance to read this. And there's someone else joining us.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jim Atkinson. I live across the street. I can't even, I can't even see, can't even imagine seeing what's going to go on with the hot tub. It's very, it seems very private and I'm all for it. Just go away and let me use it.
I don't think we could, we could include that with our decision, but
Keeping the gate unlocked. Is it? No, what about the noise, Jim? What if there's splashing? That won't bother you?
No, I can't imagine it would bother me at all. I'm sure it's going to be very nicely done like they did the rest of the property.
Well, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. We'll record that for the minute. There is this, I think, I don't know how many people have read it yet, but the, a woman named Mrs. Stepan, who lives on Livingston Street, or no, she drove by Livingston Street.
Yeah.
And she said, I drove by 25 Livingston and saw the proposed location. I won't go on Zoom, but please convey to the applicants that at 18 Cross Chestnut Street, I am very exposed to what happens at their house. And I'm hoping their hot tub won't result in noise, et cetera. I think I've, in years, decades since I've been near a hot tub, but I don't recall it being particularly noisy. Sometimes the occupants can be, but
What about the sound of the water? Is it very, it's not noisy, the water? I don't know.
I mean, 18 Chestnuts is probably
100 yards.
Exactly. I would agree.
Yes. I went for a walk tonight to see where that house was in relation to 25 Livingston and it was kitty corner to the far corner away from where the hot tub would be.
And it's, it's very far away. We can't even see their house, some of our house because our garage is in the way.
It's not about, it's not about Miss Stepan's house. It's about the noise to adjoining property. Because our, it's not just about her. It's obviously about the neighborhood. Do hot tubs make a lot of noise?
No.
I don't know.
I don't, I don't think the hot tub would register on a noise here.
I don't think so. That's right. The, and the, the back, the whole backyard there is, is obviously a place to go out and be and admire and relax in, but that, isn't that true of all of our backyards to some degree? And this wouldn't seem to be, to my mind, recollections I have of people with this kind of a device, any particular addition to the noise of enjoying your backyard.
I don't know whether it's a lot of plumbing. I just don't know.
No, the plumbing of a hot tub is really not that loud. And I think the location is well chosen in regard to maximizing the distance from all adjacent residential properties. And the church is separated by a yard, which is only used occasionally. So I think of the locations they could have chosen on their lot, it's the best possible location. As you already just pointed out, it's about 100 yards to the house of the newest person on Chestnut. And I should point out that there's actually a swimming pool within about 20 feet of our house anyhow.
Yeah, that is.
That's true.
If I had my gavel, I'd be tapping it now because we've advanced into a, another
Alright.
phase. We need right now to have, have an, a motion to close our public meeting.
So move.
Are we ready to do that? Did you do that, Lydia?
I did.
Is there a second?
I second.
And those in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
I think we've got another unanimous thing. Isn't it wonderful? And then we have have our, our obligation is our discussion, which we launched into, and so has Weinstein's dog.
No, we don't, we don't have a dog.
It's John's dog.
Okay, well, he doesn't get to vote. I think I hate to rush through this, of course. There's so many other things we don't want to do these days, but would anybody like to move a decision that we could then discuss for the response to this request?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to be part of the discussion. Are you, are you trying to move past the discussion part?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
My family knows I was born in discussioning, so
Are we in the discussion phase or do you want us to make a motion to discuss?
No, I think that is not necessary. Once we've gotten out of the public hearing. So let's talk as long as we want. And then if someone thinks they can shape our talk into something that we can then vote on, let's go do it that way.
I have something I'd like to say, and it's because it's probably the only time I'll ever get to say it. And perhaps it's not entirely relevant to the question of the hot tub, but it it's relevant to the fact that I've been on the zoning board for a very long time. And I remember when these applicants came. And as I recall, and I could be mistaken, and I just have to vent it now because I don't know if I'll get another chance. This property was never supposed to have been torn down and rebuilt. We, when we, as I recall, we gave a variance to an old house. It's in the Historic Preservation District with all kinds of requirements that it, that it be preserved. And I remember watching as the entirety of the house was raised and built back up into a very nonhistoric house. It's, it's really quite stands out on Livingston Street as the only house that, that has not a historic character and not even a, really an attempt at a historic character. And I, I sort of feel as if, you know, it's okay for these applicants to want to come before the zoning board. These applicants also did a whole lot of Airbnb-ing. I mean, I, unfortunately, I'm their neighbor and there were suitcases coming in and out of it on a, kind of a daily, weekly basis. Now, again, maybe not relevant. But I just, it makes me a little bit want to place at least some conditions on this because I'm, I'm just a little wary. I don't feel that these applicants with all due respect, have been as straightforward as they might have been in their prior applications to this board. And it just leaves me with a slightly, a slight misgiving. And I have to, I have to vent that because I don't know one other chance I will get to do so. And I hope you don't take it in the wrong way. And perhaps I'm mistaken about the facts, but I do distinctly recall being aghast to find the entirety of the house torn down when it is smack dab in the middle of the Historic Preservation District. And
Actually, that is incorrect.
Is it? Please then clarify, correct my misunderstanding. What happened?
I, I could, I could do that.
Okay.
Um, so the original proposal was to tear it down. And so the planning board and another, I'm not sure if it was the ZBA or not, but they opted not to. And so what the applicant had to do, because since the structure was so unstable, they basically kept the original frame of the, pretty much the entire building and reframed around everything just to support it. And I'm not speaking on behalf of the applicants, but they probably spent twice the amount of money to bring it up to code. That was strictly financially, they, they took a hardship strictly from the fact that they, the building could not be torn down. And, um, you know, I, again, I barely know the applicants. I know them from this, from their original application, but I, I think what, again, this is my opinion, but I have spoken to many engineers and the, the conditions that they were forced to deal with was unfair. So again, this is my opinion. You know, I, I do have professionals that back me up on it, but they basically had to reframe an entire house between an existing framework. And it was just a colossal waste of money.
But John, how did they get permission to tear it down when it's in the historic district?
It was not, it was not torn down.
It was not torn down.
It was not torn down. It was
It was, it was built around.
Well, it looks nothing, it looks nothing like the original.
It does.
It does. It looks very much like the original. If you had a photo and we have the photos of, of the house looked like
I think
the extent of recreating the, the little brackets in the front porch, I had to send them to somebody because they were completely rotten out. And I was able to salvage one. I sent it to South Carolina where a man reconstructed them for us at a very high cost. And so the house, the way it looks is the way it was. The porch, the only thing is that we added seven feet to one side. But the front of the house is identical, otherwise it was not torn down. When we opened up the walls, there were no studs because it was built in the 1770s. There were tree trunks and tree branches inside and it was not structurally solid. So we had to build around what was existing in there. And that's why we did so much work and we spent so much money. So we've tried very hard to respect the historical quality of this house inside and out. We had salvaged some of the, you know, the stuff that we found, for example, the front porch. The posts were rotten out and had to be replaced. So we salvaged some of them and put them inside in front of the fireplace. So we, we did a lot of work to try and maintain the historical quality of this room because that's what we wanted. the historical quality of this room because that's what we wanted.
And I get neighbors on Livingston Street now, always complimenting us on what we did to this house. All the time, the way we've done the landscaping, the way the gardening looks.
I'd like to.
So I just, you know, I felt that we had to respond to the.
I just, could I respond to one more point about the Airbnb? We have done the Airbnb only on weekends, only from April to October. And we've been very, very conscious of the impact on our neighbors, and we've minimized it as much as possible. These are two bedrooms inside our home. It's not a separate building where people can stay on for like weeks at a time. It's inside our own home. And because it's inside of our own home, we completely stopped it because of COVID. And we have no idea when we will be able to have guests again in our home because of the situation with COVID. But, you know, we've always followed the village rules and regulations on every level.
Thank you. I'd like to interrupt as a forty year resident of Livingston Street and in one of its remarkable old homes. I appreciate what you, you've said, and I don't see how the matter that's before us, which has to do with the distance between the wall of the house and the end of the what it proposes to be added to it. I, I lament what happened to our old home after its third occupant, after we had to leave it after forty years. And I think Livingston Street is very important to the village. And I, but I think we need now to turn our mind, if we, minds if we can, to the matter that's before us, which has to.
With all due respect, Colton, I will simply add that I'm fine with this. I needed to air it because there is a, under the code, noncompliant people, applicants who are not in compliance need to become in compliance before they ask for further variances. So I wanted to satisfy to myself as a public official that the compliance issues that I had questions about had been addressed. So I'm now satisfied, but I don't think that, that I, as an applicant, as a zoning board member, I should be chilled from ensuring my duty that the applicants are in compliance. So I.
I'm just asking.
Mr. And Mrs. Weinstein for, for, for telling you this. And I, and I'm very pleased to hear that you have been in compliance the whole time. And I, I thank you for your courtesy. Thank you very much. And I'm fine with this.
Thank you, Rachel. I didn't mean to shut off anything that you wanted and thought it was important to say. It's just I thought we should move along towards.
Absolutely.
It is we have to decide about.
Absolutely.
Announced. I would appreciate a motion unless there are other issues that have come up about the the question that we're facing.
I would like to say one thing before we make the motion and perhaps could be incorporated. As I mentioned, we are allowed to impose conditions under the guidelines. And I listened to the, the planning board hearing, and they suggested, though it may not have made it into the minutes, that they wanted to make sure that perhaps we should insist that the privacy fence be maintained as part of the granting of this variance. So that particularly in regard to the church land immediately adjacent to the hot tub, that privacy is maintained. And the second thing I would like to say, in view of the fact that you're entitled to continue to rent rooms and you may well, after COVID, return to doing that. Since the request was for a hot tub for some medical use, really, that condition of allowing a hot tub in this location where a variance is required would be that it's for the use of the owner of, perhaps we should say, not for the use of rental guests.
Well, we totally agree with that.
I'm totally agreeing with that.
Yeah, Christopher, the Department of Health, when it comes to Airbnbs and BnBs, they don't allow the guest to use the pools unless they're registered with the Department of Health. Or any type of water sources, spas, hot tubs, what have you. They'd have to be registered with the Department of Health.
This is not a, this is not a bed and breakfast. It's a room rental.
Room rental, but either way, if you open it up, if you open it up to the public, you're still required to report it with the Department of Health.
Okay.
I am asking if anyone thinks we've reached a point where we should make a motion to consider and to get us home again.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance request. Or to vote on it.
With the stipulation of maintaining the privacy fence?
Yes, with the, with the privacy fence.
Good idea. Lydia?
I'll second that.
Was that a sec?
I'll second that.
So it's been moved that this be approved, but with the inclusion of the maintenance of that, of that fence. Maybe further conversation about that.
Um, you, just a quick question. You have on your site plan, the hot tub will only be five feet and it'll sort of, you know, stay tucked inside that little addition that you have. So I just wanted to make sure that you have a hot tub that you've picked out or you know, exactly. Okay, so it's definitely going to be five feet. It's not going to be any bigger than that. It's not going to sort of creep up to the edge of the addition or anything like that.
The, the only thing I wasn't sure about is whether there's a requirement for the space between the hot tub and the wall behind it. It may be two inches, but the tub itself has a curved front. And the, the longest part is five feet. And the wall of the kitchen is seventy foot feet.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I mean, you only have to install it according to manufacturer specifications. I think for the most part, there is a access panel that can't be blocked. You're going to, when you do install the hot tub, the, the electric will have to be hardwired and signed off by a third party. And then the only thing that you gotta consider is at some point, you're going to drain the hot tub. And being so close, you know, even though you're five feet away, you're going to have to somehow take in consideration that the water draining out does not basically terminate out onto your neighbor's property. So that's something that you'd have to take a look at. Maybe even a drain might have to be installed when they, when they set up that pad.
Do you think that should be added, John? I thank you for that, John. And both what, what you've said and what Lydia said, I think will reside in our minutes. But do you think that Christopher's motion should be changed some, in some degree to, to reflect that or simply make that?
I, I could, it really shouldn't have anything with the variance. I mean, I'll make that a condition on the building permit. Prior to giving a certificate of compliance, I'll make sure that these items get addressed. It'll be in the minutes. I'll attach the minutes to the building permit.
It has been moved and seconded. Do we need further conversation about any of the points that have come up in the last hour or so? I think it's been very informative, but thanks to everybody's involvement, including our, our new friends. And John and Kevin, it's been very informative. And Christopher, I'd love you to be my successor. Think on it. So then, it's been moved and seconded. And I don't know whether Ryan's going to be able to give us exactly what we've, what we've moved, what we are voting about, but it is to approve the variance, but also that it be carefully installed and properly installed. And John has said that that will be part of his responsibility.
And the fence maintained.
Yeah, that's right.
Maintained.
Yes, the, the fence maintained. So may I ask that those in favor of that, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who are not, nay. No nays. If I had my gavel, I could pound my desk now. Is there any further questions? The only questions, of course, Rachel, and I have to do our little, little dance. Remember that, Rachel?
Which dance is that? The reading of the?
The requirement that our records show that this.
I can make the, I can make findings.
I'm almost done.
Based upon Christopher's identification of the criteria under which we are to rule, which is that there will not be an undesirable neighborhood, a change in the neighborhood because the hot tub in question will be secluded and put back, put sufficiently behind a a privacy fence and is sufficiently removed from other adjoining properties. There will, for that reason, there will not be an adverse effect on the neighborhood. Variance is not substantial as it is only a request of five feet. It is self-created, but as we always say in our findings, and as Christopher pointed out in his reading of the of the zoning regulations, this, this fact is not dispositive of the question of whether to grant a variance. We are imposing certain conditions, which you've identified, which is, does somebody want to recite the conditions? Because I didn't take notes on those as you guys were talking. Add the conditions.
I can repeat them. I've been recording the conditions. So first condition is the fence will be maintained. The six foot pri- privacy fence will be maintained to respect the privacy and use of the adjoining property owned by the Third Lutheran Church. That the hot tub will be installed per manufacturer's directions. And the property owner will take into consideration when draining the hot tub that it will not drain onto the neighboring property. Is that all the conditions?
That sounds what we've just voted positively for. But I have to ask Rachel to, don't you remember we had to do this because of the state of New York? Do we believe that our decision cannot realize a reasonable return substantial as shown by competent financial evidence? That is, what we've said would be reasonable to be followed by the folks who brought the charge, the case to us. And second.
Wait, Colton, where, I'm not sure where that, is that part of the area variance requirements?
No.
I, I think it's, I think it's part of, of any hearing we have, I've been told.
Really?
If you feel not, that would be, that would be fine with me. I do feel that what we've talked about does comply with these issues.
That we, that they can't realize a reasonable return on their investment without the, without the requirement, without the variance sought. Ryan, is that something we need to be including?
I believe the document Colton is looking at follows the variance request application for the village. But I believe it, it, it fell, it falls under the item you pointed out, Rachel, before.
Preservation.
That, and also that it's not substantial, that that financially, they really can't pick any other location because it would create a hardship for them. Financially, I think that's what, what Colton is looking at, that, that line there.
Yep, there, the, the, the second of our requirements has to do with whether the alleged hardship is unique and does not apply to substantial portion of district or neighborhood. Third is that the requested variance will not alter essential character of the neighborhood. And finally, that the alleged hardship has not been self-created. Now, this was in its own way, I think, self-created, except that this was the situation of the original property where the device is, is supposed to be installed. Does anybody?
Question of the essential character of the neighborhood, I would add that I think in general, a hot tub might alter the essential character of some historic neighborhoods. But in this particular case, because of the sighting of the hot tub, it will not, it will not. I don't think we, it will not alter the essential character of this neighborhood. I do think we might be constrained to say, and you might add to the minutes, Ryan, that I don't think this means that every request for a hot tub in a historic district will be granted because there will be cases where it will be unsightly and will, will alter the historic character of the neighborhood. I don't think that the applicants will do that in this case. I think it seems like they've done a very good job of citing it appropriately, so.
Duly noted.
Yes, I think that's right. I think the caution that we've expressed today is one that will be emblematic in the future if the, the tub question comes up again.
Right.
So if we are in reasonable happiness, we might be even more happy if I had someone who would move that we adjourn.
So move.
So moved. I have a move, motion?
Second.
Kevin? Kevin waved his hand and I, and so did Rachel.
And everybody else said something.
You can join too. All, all those in favor, don't wave a hand, just say aye.
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 If I had my gavel, I would bang it now. Thank you very much, everybody.
Yes.
Mrs. Weinstein, thank you for joining us. And you've taught us several things to think about.